Here we are live on YouTube.
You can begin.
Okay. Good morning and welcome, Hanover Park businesses. I'm Shubra Goven and the Director of Community and Economic Development for the village of Hannibal Park. And we're so glad that you were able to join us today in this virtual town hall. We are excited to share with you some great news that we have about how the village has come up with ways to help our businesses. And also talk to you about financial resources that are available. We have some great panelists with us this morning. And also want to share with you some guidelines that we have put together for outdoor dining, which would be available and enables hopefully by the Friday. Before we get into it, I would like to introduce our mayor, Mayor Craig.
Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to thank you for joining with us and our panelists this morning. The village board, our staff, and I have been working on figuring out ways to help our businesses, especially our small business community. I am excited to share some information and news with you this morning. This is resourceful, good, resourceful information for each of you. We will let Schuber introduce our panel speakers and we're honored to have them with us this morning.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that many of our businesses did apply for the different loan programs that are out there. The PCHA Protection Program, the EIDL, et cetera, and some may have questions about how those loans can become forgivable loans. We also wanted to, we heard from businesses who wanted to know, are there any other programs that are still out there that might still have some funding juice left in them? So keeping that in mind and the processes that our businesses were struggling with, we have a great panel today. Let me introduce you to them. We have some, you know, we have both the Illinois DCEO and the Small Business Administration with us. Let me introduce our panel today. We have Diana Alfaro. She's the Latino Business Development Manager in the Office of Minority Economic Empowerment at the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, which we know as DCEO. The second panelist we have is Manuel or Manny Lopez, who's the Northeast Region Manager of the Economic Development Team and also at the Illinois DCEO. From the Illinois SBA, the US SBA, we have Steve Conkle, who is the Economic Development Specialist in the Illinois District Office of the US Small Business Administration. Thank you for our, to our panelists for being here this morning. We'll have them get to their presentations before we do that. Would like to share with you some exciting news that we have from the village's perspective of what the village is able to do to help our small businesses. May, I hope you all know that we, the village had already relaxed our sign regulations to allow for tent signage. We want to make sure that our businesses are able to reach out to their customers and let them know that you're open. With that, the village board has agreed to provide sandwich board signs to all of our small businesses. As you can see, the mayor has one in his office. We did a markup to show what that sandwich board sign might look like, and the village is going to make those signs available to all of our small businesses. If you would like one, please contact us at 630-823-5780. That's the Community Development Department's phone number, again, 630-823-5780. Mayor also has a banner in his office. I'm not sure if you're able to see that, but there you go. Thank you, Mayor. And both of these signs, we, the village is paying for these so that we can make these available to our businesses free of cost. And we did work with one of our local businesses ER2 to manufacture these signs. So first of all, a good shout out to ER2. Mayor was able to pick these up from our local business this morning. Thank you, Mayor, for making the trip. And our businesses, if you would like one sign, please contact us. What we can do then is have your logo, your image in the space that you can see right now where the old Salem Cafe image is, and have your business logo on it. These signs are sturdy and well-designed and have a space so where you can put. Mayor, you want to explain that? I know they went through that, how you can put sand or water in the sign and that will make the sign.
Sure. Do I, am I, am I?
Yeah, yeah, you're on, you're on.
I never know. These things like to turn me off. Signboard is really what makes me proud in working with ER2. You can balance the sign with either water or sand, so it'll, it'll stay, it'll stay put. It'd be uniform throughout the village and I'm really pleased that the board has decided to support our businesses in this manner. It's well-constructed, made in the USA, which makes me proud being an old veteran and the banner the same way. So we want to support our businesses in Hanover Park to the best of our abilities, have one standard, have one nice look that you can keep into the future. And, you know, while we have, we're doing this, it's really, it's well-made and well-constructed, so nice, it's a nice objective for our community.
Thank you, Mayor. And in the future, if you would like to use the sign for daily specials, you can do that as well and work ER2 on that. The second thing that we are trying to help our businesses is with online marketing. These days, you know, all of our consumer habits have changed. Since we're not able to go visit all of the businesses and even before, we all check out our businesses online first. Who doesn't Google a business before going in there? If you want to go out for dinner, you first check the menu online. So we want to make sure that our businesses are all competitive online. So you can reach a larger audience, more potential customers. Now, many of our businesses do have a website, but we are working with a contractor, a consultant, who can help all of our small businesses. If you don't have a website, if you want to have a Facebook page, if you want to do social media marketing, we will connect you to our consultant. The village will pay for this initial setup and you will be able to compete online with any other businesses and that may be competitors for you. A much larger audience. So once again, if you would like to do that, please contact us and we will help you connect to our consultants, who can then set up a website for you, do the social media, help you do some online marketing. And as the sign in the mayor's office shows, it says outdoor seating. So one more thing that the village is working on is allowing our restaurants to have outdoor dining. Our Inspection Services Division, that deals with all the permits and inspections, has come up with a pretty detailed set of guidelines for our restaurant. We have, we are putting those online. You should be able to access them online. And that would start this Friday. Mayor, do you want to mention anything more about outdoor dining before?
Well, no, we're looking to support with outdoor dining. We're looking for a plan from the ownership, how they want to do that, so we can find ways to support that, to have a single standard of safety. I pulled down the, the outdoor dining rules, very complex, but we're here to help all our businesses expedite a process. And it's important that we're all ready to go on Friday. I believe the things we've put in place should assist with that. I'm here to assist, as is staff, staff standing by. Alexander, are you ready? We got that phone number published. Is that your number?
And is the department's telephone number, any one of us will be able to help you.
Oh, good. That means you and Ellen and Shubra. So we're all turning to, to support our, our community in an exceptional manner. So go ahead, Shubra.
Thank you. We have the details online. I'd like to give you a quick summary of what the restaurants will be able to do. If you have an outdoor permit already for dining, you will be able to get started with just a very simple application. If you would like, if you don't have outdoor dining right now, but you would want to use, say, your parking spaces of your restaurant, we would work with you to develop a plan. Please submit information to us. Inspection Services has a very quick and easy-to-use permit application. It will, of course, be free of cost. We will turn these around as quickly as possible. Like the mayor said, staff is standing by to help our businesses. All we need is some basic information, no complicated drawings, no costs associated, and the permit for outdoor dining would be valid for 90 days. Now, hopefully, the indoor dining would be allowed by then. Who knows how the pandemic goes? But if we need to extend that permit, we would work with you on extending that permit as well. Most of our businesses already know our Inspection Services staff and they are online as well. If you had any questions, please use the Q&amp;A section in, in this webinar. If you have any questions, please type those in, write those in. We are all standing by and we would be happy to answer your questions for you. If you have any questions, if you missed this webinar and you're looking at it through later on, we would send in your, your responses through us reaching out to you as well. Hours of operation, whenever the restaurant opens until about 10 o'clock on weekdays and up to 11 on weekends. Of course, everyone would need to observe social distancing and sanitation regulations and adhere to all the public health and village code regulations. We also have guidelines about tents and, you know, lighting, if you want to have music. We'll, all of those on the village website. Alex, could you show how a business would be able to find that information online?
Absolutely. Give me just one second.
So if you go to the village's website, which is www.hpil.org, there is a special page that has been created for COVID resources and within that, you'll be also be able to find resources for businesses. And as you can, on the screen.
Hanover Park provides a whole host of resources for our businesses. All of this can be found on the business app here at the top. We have a special section available for COVID-19 resources. If you click on there, you will find all sorts of resources related to the pandemic, financial resources, a special section, food-related businesses. We have a Business Matters newsletter, which is full of wonderful information that Ellen provides typically monthly, although sometimes more frequently. Shop Local, this has a dining guide and a business directory that we publish. Links to partner agencies, some which provide resources, some which provide financial, other things, seminars, webinars. These are all fairly self-explanatory. If you're looking for information regarding outside dining, that's under food-related resources and we have all of those posted under this outdoor dining criteria section. The other resource that we've discussed are under this Hanover Park Small Business Assistance. In this, we also have a little description, the expanded outdoor dining, the website development, online marketing information, and then the free logo branded signage. All contact information is available in here as well. You can always contact Community Economic Development, 630-823-5780, or seedevelopment@hpil.org. That information will also be put on our screen at the end of the webinar. At all times, so you can always contact the village. We will be able to reach out and help in any way that we can.
Thank you, Alex. With that, I would like to turn the presentation over to our, would first like to invite Manny from DCEO. Manny, please take.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Shubra. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Mayor Craig, for having us. Happy to be here and share some information with folks about some of the different programs and resources available at DCEO. Wanted to go ahead and start off just very simply kind of on Google. If you search Illinois DCEO, it brings you to their first link. The reason I always tell folks to actually just go ahead and Google it is because our website URL is a bit funny with the W and then the number two. Then number two always throws folks, so I always just encourage folks to just go ahead and Google search Illinois DCEO. With that, it brings you to our homepage, very similar to what Alex, Alexander, I'm sorry, was mentioning about the Hanover Park website. It's a whole host of different resources, information available, either the COVID-19, different essential business questions, Restore Illinois. The one thing I will mention is we are working on having most of the information on our website translated to different languages. Some stuff is available currently in Spanish. If, for instance, you go to COVID Help, COVID-19 Help for Businesses, it opens up to our next website, which now is available in eight different languages, Spanish, Polish, Mandarin, Korean, Arabic. You can see all this great information here. And as I mentioned, the information is available in the different languages. So that is something that we've just taken really a strong push during this time to kind of make sure we make that information available to everyone. A lot of the different program information is here, including the Community Recovery Fund from Cook County, the PPP from the SBA, the EIDL, the Illinois Small Business Emergency Fund, which is currently on pause while we're working just because of the large sheer volume of applications that we received. But that information is all available to you directly coming from the homepage. Next, I'll touch on Restore Illinois. Since Sunday, the governor released guidelines for Phase 3. Since Sunday, we've been receiving an overwhelming amount of response via email, phone calls about the guidelines. So I wanted to kind of walk folks through it to see where you could find a lot of that information. Going through the home site and going to Restore Illinois, it opens up this webpage. Also, a neat feature that a lot of folks don't know that we added just a couple of weeks ago, actually over a month ago, is this chat box down here. Can you guys see this?
Yes, yes, we can.
It's a welcome, it's a virtual assistant, so you can click on that and ask general questions and it'll provide responses just to kind of be also another resource for assistance. But looking at the Restore Illinois Phase Plan, I want to make sure folks are available to understand where you could find the plan. A lot of times, where is this Restore Illinois plan? If you click on Read the Plan, it will actually open up the entire Restore Illinois plan in a PDF format that you can kind of take your time and kind of read through all of the different information on the different phases, a little summary of the breakdown of each particular phase, kind of what it means, what, what all is entailed, what we need to, there's the, the different regions that are available, broken down by the state. And then, like I mentioned, a breakdown of what it looks like and then what it takes to move to the next phase. That's what's kind of key and a lot of folks keep asking, how do we get to the next phase? Well, you can see here from Phase 2, the flattening, we had specific metrics in here or information about how we get moved to the next phase. Cases and capacity testing, contact tracing, and then now being in Phase 3 recovery, what this phase looks like, what, you know, businesses and kind of general public guidelines, what's being allowed to open and how they can open. As I mentioned, this is kind of a quick summary, right? Doesn't break down a lot of those details. So for that, that's where the governor provided the guidelines for Phase 3. There are about 10 different industry guidelines that were broken down from manufacturing, offices, retail, youth sports, day camps, healthcare, fitness. These are the majority of the ones that we're receiving requests on information about, the health and fitness, personal care, and I believe you mentioned restaurants. For instance, restaurants and bars, for each industry, we've included a guidelines and a toolkit. So the guidelines goes over specific information regarding that particular industry. It has a breakdown of general health minimum guidelines, HR health monitoring, that's kind of expected, the physical workplace, disinfecting, cleaning, the staffing and the attendance, external interactions, and then customer behavior, even give some minimum guidelines provided by the Illinois Department of Public Health. It's got a lot of great information, a lot of different resources there that are available. And then the toolkit. So what comes in the toolkit? The toolkit includes signage for your businesses, depending on your industry, additional information, newsletters or posts that you can put around your place of business, different, a lot of different information here that's made available with you, to you through different mediums, different links that you can actually have available for your business and for your customers. Now, going back, that is all the information again through Restore Illinois. Something else I wanted to touch on during this time is unemployment insurance. Unemployment insurance, we have a link there that brings you to the IDES, the Illinois Department of Employment Services. Again, something the governor talked about, they're receiving an overwhelming amount of calls, approximately 300,000 calls a day. That just is an enormous monumental sheer volume of calls that just, they weren't set up. We were never set up to take that many calls. So we're trying to provide as much information. The best method that we ensure folks can get through is first, finding all the information on the website, finding out what you're available for, certifying for benefits. Do you file a regular unemployment? Everybody should file for regular unemployment, even if you are a gig worker, sole proprietor. You need that denial to then show and apply for the PUW, the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program. That information is all on this website as well. They have Learn PUW, the guide, the process, the tips to avoid common application issues, FAQs, a lot of great information there for you as well. How to upload documents, because for some of these, since you're a sole proprietor or 1099 employee, you don't have regular payroll perhaps, or you didn't pay into the unemployment benefit. So that's where you would need to provide some proof of income and uploading some documents, and that is also here on the website as well. Again, this is also available in Spanish. The last thing I wanted to touch on for myself is under unemployment as well, and the homepage of DCEO, if you slide down, you will see employment and training. This is another thing that right now with the great amount of folks that are out of work or looking for work assistance, we do provide workforce development. A lot of great resources here for folks actually either looking to get different employment, training. There are virtual job fairs, since obviously right now we can't, you know, gather in large groups. It's a great resource for employers as well to provide opportunity to set up virtual job fairs, to find different workforce. It's a great resource with a lot of great information as well. This information is all hosted based off of our home website. We encourage folks to come, take a look, read the information. For some of the information like the guidelines, they currently are available in Spanish. However, they're not on the website currently. We are working to upload those, but for any folks that are looking for those, please let us know. We will make sure we send you out a copy of the guidelines currently that were been translated into Spanish. With that, I will hand it over to my colleague, Diana Alfaro, who is from OMI, the Office of Minority Economic Empowerment. I will hand it over. Dee?
Thank you, Manny. I, I know we don't have too much time, so I'm going to go ahead. Sorry, wait, I'm going to turn off your screen and I'm going to share mine. I'm going to talk a little bit about some research that we have available. So as Manny discussed, how to get to our homepage. So one of the things I want to, want to show you all is under entrepreneurs, we have what's called the First Stop Information. So the First Stop Information is basically a first-stop business information center where any business owner could go and call us or email us with any question they have regarding permits, regulatory, et cetera. We can take those calls and emails in English or Spanish. The toll-free helpline is 1-800-252-2923. If you have questions regarding the guidelines, what's going to be in Phase 4, questions regarding Phase 3 at the state level, feel free to reach out to us at the First Stop. Under entrepreneurs still, there's what's called the Small Business Development Center. So if you're not already connected, the Small Business Development Centers, also known as SBDCs, provide free confidential one-on-one business consulting. They provide assistance on business planning, marketing planning, best practices for bookkeeping, et cetera. You could find one near you. The village has the Women Business Development Center, the women WBDC, at the village for open office hours. So you could go there or you could also go to, there's one in Harper College, one at Elgin Community College ECC, and there's another one at College of DuPage. And these are free. They're partially funded by the state and they're partially funded by the US federal government. Going back to our homepage, Manny touched upon it a little bit. So on, for businesses, you could go here to find out what resources we have available currently for COVID-19 responses at the small business, midsize, and larger. And I won't touch on the federal because we have the SBA here, who will be discussing the PPP. So feel free to check out this website with a little bit more information, what resources. Continue to come back because we might have stuff in the future here that might be of interest to you. The other one I wanted to share with you all is, it's not letting me click on. Okay, I'm just going to do it from here. So the Illinois Treasure, there it goes. The Illinois Treasures Office has what's called the Small Business COVID-19 Relief Program. It's a loan program for business owners where they're partnering up with approved lenders in the state to provide low-interest loans to business owners during this difficult time. Feel free to go to the Illinois Treasures page to find out more information. The loans won't exceed, won't be higher than 4.75. It'd be up to, so it might be less than that. This is also open to nonprofits as well. The other thing I wanted to touch on is DCEO has grants that are prior to COVID-19, like Rebuild Illinois. You can find those grants at this page where we list them all, or you go on the homepage, go down to Rebuild Illinois Grants. And so the two grants I want to highlight that are open to business owners are the Regional Economic Development and the Shovel Ready Site. So these two grants, the Regional Economic Development is a grant that's for up to between $250,000 and $2 million. And we're accepting applications on a rolling basis. It's for local government, but also business owners could apply for this if you have a project that's going to contribute to regional economic development. The shovel ready is also on a rolling basis, so there is no deadline. Same award amount, $250,000 to $2 million. And it's so, it's just preparing a site for it to be shovel-ready. So there are grants that are available, but just so you know, in order to apply for any state grant, you need to be pre-qualified and we have a pre-qualification phase that people need to go through, like you need to be registered with SAM.gov, which is the federal monitoring system, GATA, GATA, Grants Accountability Transparency Act. And we have guides in English and Spanish on how to go through those processes. So just to let you know, there are other opportunities to take advantage of that DCEO. There is a lot more grants coming down the pipeline, so just be aware, you might be eligible for a grant that's not COVID-19 related, but will assist your business. Feel free to reach out to Manny and I if you have any questions. We're both English and Spanish speakers. I know in Hanover Park, your village clerk, Ada Coraz, is a Spanish speaker, so if you need assistance in Spanish, you can also reach out to her. As I said, the Women Business Development Center is available for assistance and they're at, at the city, at the village clerk or village hall, sorry, with open office hours. You have the SBDCs that. You have the SBDCs at, you know, Elgin Community College, Harper College, and College of DuPage. We're here to assist you, so I won't take too much time because I know we're a little backed up. And I want to also applaud the, the village for having those resources for the signage and for the website, because I find that so essential for business owners. So please, if you haven't taken advantage of those resources, take advantage it from your village, because that's amazing resources to have. And no further ado, I'm gonna present Stephen, Steve Prockley, who's the Economic Development Specialist from the SBA.
Hi. Steve, as you're looking for, prepping for your presentation, let me mention, many of our businesses that applied for the PPP and other loans had questions about how to make sure that those loans will be forgiven. And you don't have to start your repayment for six months or so. And then there are guidelines for documentation that needs to be submitted to make sure that those loans are forgiven. And Steve will touch upon that, I'm sure. Steve?
I don't know. Thank you for inviting me to come in here and make a presentation. A little bit about the Small Business Administration's Paycheck Protection Program. That program is alive and well, and we're still taking applications from banks and also from fintech companies, CDFIs and other types of financial institutions. Here in Illinois, we've approved over seventy thousand paycheck protection program loans since the program began. What's happened in the last couple of weeks has been that questions that we're getting from the public have changed. Most of the questions that we used to get were how do we apply for the loan? What is the process of applying? How do we, what do we have to present and all the rest of that? In the last week or two, most of the questions have come from borrowers who have paycheck protection loans. And they are asking questions about what are the rules and the process for the forgiveness of loans. Well, last Friday, the Department of Treasury put the regulations on their website because the Paycheck Protection Program is actually a joint venture between the Small Business Administration and the Department of Treasury. And this, you could go to the Treasury website and you could read over what is called the Interim Final Rule. And they also have some sample forms that are available. And this gives you the information on the forgiveness area. What we are doing in the SBA locally is that we are running a series of training programs. That do tracks, one of them is designed for the business owners, and the other one is designed for bankers. And what they cover is the process of applying for forgiveness, how it, it works, what you have to put into it. If one of you, the Interim Final Rule, which is presently on the website, is a mere twenty-six pages long. And if any of you want to read it over, you're welcome to do it. It'll give you an insight as to what's going on, and also give you some copies of the forms that are due. But we're suggesting and asking that you wait until we have been, we being the Small Business Administration District Office employees. And also, we are going to be training, Diana referred to the Small Business Development Centers. When we started the program, the Small Business Development Center staffed throughout the state, was trained on assisting businesses and the, and banks in the application process. And they are going to be included in the loop as far as training businesses and banks on the forgiveness process. So it is a type of situation where we're asking you to wait for the training to be available, and then go ahead and apply for the forgiveness. The next program we have is the EIDL or the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. That program is right now closed to new applications, except for agricultural businesses in rural areas. And that particular program, if you have an application pending, they will be reviewing it and they will be getting back to you one way or another, as far as the program is concerned. If you have any questions, if you've already submitted an application and you want an update on that, contact the Disaster Assistance Center in Fort Worth. Their number is eight hundred six five nine two five nine nine. And they can give you an update on what the status of your application, if you have an EIDL application pending at the present time. The advanced program is also part of that as well. Other, the good news about the EIDL, you can also check the SBA website, is that we're in the process of hiring more loan officers and customer service reps to handle and present the application, because we've had a huge volume, unprecedented volume through the EIDL program. The third program that we have is the, what is called the Bridge Express Program. And this is part of the Express Loan Program. And is open only to banks that have qualified to become express loan lenders. If you are working with a bank that is an express loan lender, you could go to them and go through the Bridge Express Program, which would basically cover the same type of lending activity as you would have if you were getting a EIDL. And then Bridge, the Bridge Loan Express Program, again, it's a guaranteed loan made by the banks, as is the Payroll Protection Program. The last program is the Debt Relief Program. And the Debt Relief Program is a program for businesses that already have small business loans that are making payments on those loans. You will be given relief. If your bank has not contacted you about the process of applying for the debt relief, give them a call and they will get you into the program as well. And also, I'd like to follow on what Diana was saying about, we're working very closely with our resource networks, Small Business Development Centers, we are training them on the SBA program. Also, they are working with the banks, and the banks do have the option, if they want to use the traditional seven A or five oh four programs during the pandemic, the banks are free to apply under those programs as well. And also, that, that, these programs, the Micro Loan Program is available if the banks so chooses to use it as well. So that's pretty much a status report, update on where the SBA is. It is, and if there's any information about the SBA, you can either go to the Treasury Department website or go to the Small Business Administration website, and in either one, look up under Coronavirus nineteen, the link that's connected to that, and that'll give you information. One of the things that's interesting about the Express, the Paycheck Protection Program is that we have just now have application forms in sixteen languages. And they're going to be presenting the forgiveness application forms, also are going to be in sixteen languages. We have, most of them I can think of, we have French, Spanish, Chinese, Vietnamese, Sagal, Russian, Polish, Arabic, Farsi, whatever some of the other languages that they have. So if you have any of these, any of these languages, and you want to get information on the Paycheck Protection Program in any one of these particular languages, that's available. And also, in the same part with the SBA, it's the job applications for anybody that might want to get a six-month to twelve-month temporary federal appointment as a loan officer or attorney in the SBA Office of Disaster Assistance. So again, thank you for inviting me. I appreciate the opportunity to come on board. And if anybody has any questions, we'll, we're available at the SBA District Office provide support for you. Again, thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all of the information provided. We will make sure that the presentation that was made, oh, first of all, this webinar is being taped and recorded. It will be available on the Village's YouTube channel. So go to the Village's website, which is hpiil.org. On the upper right corner, you will see a little button that is like a square with a little triangle in it. Click on that, that's the icon for YouTube, and you will be able to watch a recording of this webinar on, on the YouTube channel as well. We have gotten a whole bunch of very good questions. I might be able to answer a lot of them if I go through this really short presentation and go through your questions if you had asked something specific as well. So with that, Alex, could you slide up, move to the next slide? We went through who our presenters were. We will have information about our presenters also online. So if you wanted to contact one of them directly, you would be able to do so. Diana and Manny, thank you so much for the information that you walked through. The DCO site seems to have very easy to use information. And the best thing about it is it's available in so many different languages too. So that's always one of the concerns that we have. Hannover Park being the global village, we have eighty different languages being spoken here. So it was good to see that resource available in different languages too. Steve, thank you so much for your presentation as well. Alex, the next slide, where we would be able to find more information about how to get the PPP loans forgiven. Just as a recap for the assistance that the village would be giving us, because we're getting a lot of questions about this that we have hired, we will be hiring a website designer, again, to make our businesses competitive with online marketing. There were questions about how a business can be able to do that. Please reach out to us and we will walk you through the details. Again, this is free of cost to the businesses for that initial setup. And we are paying for the sandwich board signs that the mayor showed, as well as the banner. You can, we'll send you information. If you're interested, please contact us. We do have a list of our small businesses, and the idea that the village had was to assist our small businesses with the assumption that our larger businesses and some of the more corporate ones that are larger chains probably already have the corporate assistance. However, if there was a chain business that wanted the assistance, please do contact us. These were the design examples that we got, as you can see on the screen. And we will have information for you about how to apply. Please remember this number though, six three zero eight two three five seven eight zero for any questions that you have. That's our main number for community development. And if you have questions about outdoor dining, and again, this is what you see on the screen right now, cdevelopend@hpiil.org is, is the email. We will be happy to send you more details. For outdoor dining, as I mentioned before, Inspection Services has come up with very detailed guidelines for how to enable our restaurants for outdoor dining. Some of the questions that we got were about hours of operation, how to apply for a permit. We as staff, all of the departments are working to make sure that your permits are processed as quickly as possible. We have some criteria for what we would like to see, a basic site plan that shows where you will have your outdoor dining so that we can review them. Get, if you are, if your business or your restaurant is within a shopping center, we want to make sure that your landlord is okay with the location that you want to have your outdoor dining in. If you decide to have a tent, we do have some guidelines for that as well. And of course, the social distancing for the public health and village code regulations. We will have all of this information online, also online, in order to help our, not just our businesses, but also our residents find our restaurants. We have a map that shows, so if you are a restaurant that offers Grubhub or DoorDash or Uber Eats or any one of those, or carryout or delivery, we have a map that shows your restaurant on it and our residents or anyone else for that matter can find you online. If you do not see your restaurant on this list, please let us know. We constantly update information online, and we would be happy to update that information for you as well. Shop local. Alex, next slide, please. There are a couple of other programs, depending on where your business is located. If you're in the DuPage County side, DuPage County has also come up with a new program. For those businesses that were unable to either apply for or receive, whether it's the PPP or EIDL grant, you have another shot. If you're in DuPage, DuPage County has come up with this grant program. The criteria is very similar to the PPP. And you can go to the ChooseDuPage site that would be administering the program. But on, on your screen, you'll see, you know, for small businesses, fifteen or less full-time employees. If your revenue, gross revenue is less than one point five million, you could get a grant for fifteen thousand. Again, it's a loan program that's a forgivable grant, very similar to the PPP. Also, independent contractors and gig workers. If you're on the county side, there is the Community Recovery Loan Fund as well that's being finalized. Very similar, and they have the information online as well. If you go to the Resources page on the Hannover Park website, you will be able to have all of this information in one place. And you can click on any of these, and it takes you, links you directly to that website. Under the Business tab, COVID Resources, we have all of this information in one place. With that, how to get free signage, please call this number and we'll be happy to share that information. Let me go through a couple of questions that had come up and see if I can, if I've, we've not covered any of these. Most of the questions coming in are about the temporary signs, so I'm glad to say that there is interest. We will share a list of all of our small businesses. And we will also do another outreach. Our stack has been reaching out to all of our businesses, not just through emails and newsletters, but also making phone calls. So please feel free to call us back. And same thing for online help with the online marketing too. Give us a call and we'll connect you to the resources. I'm so glad that our, you know, our, our village board has been so supportive of helping our businesses and came up with allowing the business, village resources to be used in this manner so that our businesses can reach our consumers, not just visibly through drive-by traffic from the signs, but also online. Mayor, I will throw this back to you if you had any additional comments that you would like to make.
I was, I was just reading the Q and A, it looks like you've been typing answers as we go along. The process looks very complex. We're trying to make it as simple as possible. And you've got the context for community development, questions on how to get on board with this thing. Very complex, tents. We're still working through some of those issues. But I'm really pleased we pulled this together. I think Um but I'm really pleased we pulled this together. I think this this morning with our guest, uh Stephen, Manny, Diana, excellent job. Really appreciate your time. But finally, uh I think we can close this out. Um please uh make that phone call to community development and uh if you have questions. Uh I get plenty of texts and questions on what's going on. Signs are marvelous. Um I'm glad we're providing that. Um looking, we're looking for, you know, a simple plan on what you want to do if you want outside uh dining, so we can work through that as expeditiously as possible. So we're ready to go on Friday. That's our goal. Everybody that wants to have outdoor seating operational. So last but not least, uh like to invite you all to shop local. We need, we need that revenue in Hanover Park. It's very important to us. We want our businesses to succeed. That's our goal and our please take advantage of the signs um for marketing assistance. I spoke to the owner of E R two this morning. They're ready to come out and work with you. Get your logo. If you have a logo, put that on the sign. But what we can do, most of this right online. And uh I'm I'm really pleased that staff has pulled that together. It's a outstanding uh method and uh we're all here to support you and to endure. And uh thank you to our guests again. I really appreciate it. And hope, hopefully, this will be online and they add value to what we do. There was some information shared that even I need to review. So I like to stay current and uh on board with the law. Shubra, you and your staff, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh like the mayor said, the uh outdoor dining guidelines are uh handsome. And uh staff is standing by to uh get through those questions if you had them. But we'll turn those permits around as quickly as possible to help our businesses. Especially our restaurants have uh the outdoor dining that's needed. Uh yes, but a very comprehensive job, uh but they are user-friendly. Uh and we'll have all of that information online. Thank you all so much for joining us this morning. I hope you found this informative. Look forward to getting our continued emails that we send out to all of our businesses. We are the business newsletter called Business Matters. You can go to the Village website for additional information as well. Uh once again, uh thank you.